2024, the O'Quinn Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. We brought live on local cable channel eight. Stream live on the Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpee.gov, mashpee ma.gov/channeleight. It is 6:30, we'll convene an open session. And I would also like to mention dedicated employees passed away this past week. Bruce Stello from my from Recreation. We send prayers to their families.
I move old.
He wants to do for the minutes.
Okay. No problem with that.
So I need a motion in a second.
So, second.
Tom?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. In hearings, right, we have an update from Cape and Islands District Attorney, Robo Gilbois.
Thank you. Evening, everybody. With your permission, may I circulate around?
Really appreciate it, and I know you have a very high marks in the five-minute-ish range. I'm doing a tour, I go around to the select boards for the entire role of the Cape and Islands DA's office as its own DA's office. He was successful, ran, and he won. So, the office in which I sit started because of a Mashpee resident who sat on this very board. Just wanted to point that out. And for whatever it's worth, I worked for Phil Rollins. He hired me in the mid-'90s. So, thank you for that. I just wanted to touch upon a few topics for your consideration, and again, you might remember I was here last year, I'm not going to regurgitate what I said last year, I'm going to tell you what I did from last year forward to today. One thing I wanted to talk about was human trafficking. Human trafficking was an issue that was not on the radar screen when I was running for this position. Shortly after I was sworn in, I went to an event in January 2023 hosted by Cape Cod Path, or People Against Trafficking Humans. And it was a presentation by a survivor, her name was Jasmine Grace, and it was at a coffee shop over in Hyannis on a cold Tuesday night. I walk in, there's about 25 people, and only one other gentleman, big, strong man in a dark blue suit, wound up being the Chief of Police from Orleans, Scott McDonald. So, after hearing this compelling story by Jasmine Grace, I went down to Chief McDonald's office a couple days later just to ask him, "What were you doing there?" And he explained that he was trying to launch a law enforcement task force to investigate human trafficking cases. He inspired me. I went back to my office, looked at my staff, and said, "What can we do?" So, we formed our own HT, or Human Trafficking Task Force, made up of civilians to promote awareness. And folks from Independence House, Children's Cove, Health Imperatives, Cape Cod Path, Treasure Life, and others joined to help us promote awareness. But as everyone here knows, we're a prosecuting office, so we had to do more. I went to our Cape delegation, and I'll use a fancy term, I begged. I begged for some additional funding to launch a prosecution unit dedicated for human trafficking cases only. And we were successful in those efforts, I want to give a shout-out to our state Senators Moran and Seer, they were able to secure some funding for us. And we went to the Attorney General's office, we met with a woman named Vanessa Madge, who's an Assistant Attorney General handling HT cases all across the state, and we convinced her to leave the bright lights of the big city and come down to the Cape and help us launch the HT unit. So, she came down, and one of the first things she did was she got with Danielle Whitney, who's the Director of our Community Programs, and they filled out an application for a grant that is offered every single year by the Mass DA's Association. The pot was $1 million. Each application ceiling was $100,000. It was a grant that was offered every year for more than 10 years, I believe, at the time. This office had never applied for that grant. So, Vanessa and Danielle start filling out the application, and literally during that process, we learned the pot's been cut from $1 million down to $450,000. So, now we're competing with the 10 other district attorney's office for that much smaller pot. They put their application in, and we were awarded a little over $97,000. What did we do with the money? We gave $50,000 to an outfit known as My Life, My Choice. They work with adolescent and teenage survivors of HT, they did not have a presence here in the Cape and Islands at all. They were a Boston outfit, and a little bit of Metro Boston outfit, but with that $50,000, they came down here to create a presence. We gave $10,000 to the Independence House, who works with adult victims of HT, and the balance of which we use for training purposes for both our prosecutors and victim witness staff, as well as law enforcement partners. Several individuals recently returned from national training in Dallas this past May. We continued on, and if you go on our website, you will be able to learn the results of her investigations. And since I mentioned the website, we have one. This office didn't have one before. We have what's called a forward-facing website, it's actually interactive. You can sign up for text messaging and email updates. It's capeandislandsda.gov. We're pretty excited, it just launched about a month and a half ago, so I'd invite all of you to take a look at it. I spent about 40 minutes checking it out and get through the whole thing. Getting close to wrapping up, just want to mention that as I was, again, running for this office, I would suggest there were two topics that resonated wherever I went. First had to do with mental health. Some of you might remember, I talked about how this is the only area of this state that did not have a mental health court. And a mental health court is where professionals in the field come right into the courtroom, work with a struggling defendant to identify what's the core issue. When you make that identification, of course, you have the greater chance to treat it and reduce recidivism, making us all safer. I want to give a shout-out to John Julian, the Presiding Judge in Barnstable District Court, for his work with the trial court to launch a mental health court. It opened last September, it's presided by Judge Tara Wright, and we were asked to tap a prosecutor in our office to be the prosecutor in that specialty session. I asked the staff very quickly, Shauna Suve raised her hand, she has a bachelor's degree in psychology, and happens to come from a law enforcement background in her family, so that specialty court is up and running and growing organically, and I'm getting really good reports back. But the other topic that resonated well was community engagement. There was a deep need to do a deeper community engagement by this office and the community. No one really knew what the DA's office was, and certainly didn't know anybody in the DA's office. So, I talked about creating a new position called the Community Engagement Officer. I've done that, her name is Kelly Quealy, and her first task is we're creating a community coalition called the DA and Us. And she started working on that. It's going to have about a half dozen to a dozen members, they're going to meet quarterly for the first year, and essentially it's just a way for our office to keep our finger on the pulse of what's going on in any given community. Staff have pointed it out early on, you look at Cape Cod from the satellite, you see one Cape Cod, but we all know down here there's at least 15 different Cape Cod's, if not more so, because a lot of us identify ourselves in the villages we come from. So, again, going through this community coalition, it just allows us to keep a pulse on what's going on. I'm going to leave you with this. I did mention this last time, but it's worth repeat. When I took this position over, I learned that our budget was $5.5 million. The Northwest DA's office, which has the, pretty much the exact same annual population that we have, at 260,000, had a population of $8.5 million, or three more than us, 60% greater budget. When I first came in office, it was tough to organize, to make such a solid request for a big boost in budget, because I only had three or four months to do so, but now we are organizing, and we're looking to come before all the select boards across the Cape and the Islands with a specific list of, "This is what we're looking to do, should we get the extra money, and this is what it's going to cost us." And we'll be asking for your support if you're so inclined. So, thank you very much for your time, I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you for your update.
Thanks.
Thank you.
For the work you're doing.
Okay. Department of Public Works Director Catherine Loren. Discussion and approval of the following. Temporary sign for the annual hazardous waste collection. That's number one.
So, as just mentioned, this is the signage for our annual hazardous waste collection in August, the third Saturday in August, at the Mashpee Middle High School. I will mention that we will also be offering shredding, secure document shredding services, as we've been doing, and MECC will be there to collect textiles. So, it's a great event, and I know a lot of people learn about it from the signs that we place out in town.
At the road, yes, exactly. Great, thank you, Catherine. And next is the award of contracts for design and engineering.
Yes, so this is
Oh, I'm sorry, we need approval for the sign.
That's all, just double-checking.
A motion, I need a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes. David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, I'm sorry.
No, thank you. So, this is award of a contract for design and engineering for the Mashpee School HVAC projects. This is the HVAC renovation at the middle high school and the Quasnet School. We had three teams that had submitted their qualifications. We interviewed the three, and selection committee voted to recommend Raymond Design Associates for the contract. You may recall their name, they did work with the town on the renovation at the Quasnet School several years ago, so we are familiar with their work and felt that they were a good fit for this project. The contract would be for the entire project, but the fee at this point is only to do what we're calling Enhanced Feasibility Study. As you may recall, the project is to provide improvements to air quality, as well as air conditioning in the classrooms at the two schools. Really, until we complete this feasibility study, we're not sure which option we would move forward, so it was difficult to come up with a contract price that would bring us through the 100% design for the two schools. So, the plan is to work with RDA over the next six weeks, and then we'll be making some decisions, and then move forward at that point with the additional work for design at the two schools.
Any questions for Catherine?
This is essentially for just the mechanical designs of the system?
Correct.
It's not as GC or anything to build out or anything?
No, just to look at the mechanical and what the best option would be for each school.
Okay.
I need a motion.
Motion approved. The proposal of design and engineering services for the project awarded to Raymond Design Associates, Inc.
Second. Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Next, Catherine?
Next is the award for the DPW Masonry Wall Restoration. So, this was a request for bids, we received the three bids, which, as the last time I was here, a big difference between the low bidder and the other two. So, we did reach out to the vendor, the manufacturer who supplies the product, and spoke with JAG and their references, and we were very comfortable with moving forward with the recommendation for JAG painting contractors for the about $41,000 for the project.
Did you find out why the price difference between?
Again, I think similar to the last project, and just because of the tight window for work, you know, they have availability in the schedule, the others two don't necessarily, but, you know, if the town were to pay them the dollar amount requested, then they would make room in their schedule. But, again, based on what the cost of the material is and what we anticipated for labor, the bid did seem to meet the requirements for the project. And as mentioned, there are, during the project, there will be required inspections, so we will make sure that they are performing.
Any questions for Catherine? Okay, I'm reading a motion.
Motion approved, JAG Painting Contractors, Inc., of Fall River, Mass., in the amount of $40,994.97.
I'll second that motion.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Catherine. Next is our town treasurer, Greg Mead.
Good evening. So, first thing is an end-year transfer from foreclosure expense to other purchases and debt service accounts. I've done this in the past, I think most people have, so basically it's due to the expensive billing for our builder who sends out our bills, so.
Looking for Standard bookkeeping.
Standard, pretty much.
Yeah.
I need a motion for the transfer.
Motion to transfer in the amount of $5,000.
For bookkeeping.
For bookkeeping.
Second. Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Second on your list is, I need you to make a motion to approve the interim loan for the SRF. It's $5.4 million. It's basically the Phase 1A that's approved, so we need that to be signed by you, so that we can then go through the interim loan, through the 0% interim loan, through the SRF.
Right. Anybody have any questions on? No, we're all set. Motion.
Motion approved.
I have a second?
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay, I'll have documents for you to sign at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scary signing that one. Okay, next, we have Evan. Discussion and approval of the following. Resolution adopting the Town of Mashpee Hazarded Migration Plan under update 2023.
Good evening. Yes, so the Planning Department, beginning in, the end of 2022, it was actually the Building Department who sought and received a grant from the state to participate in a pilot program specifically for the purpose of updating our 2017 Hazard Mitigation Plan, which had fallen out of date a few years ago. Subsequent to that award, we were partnered with a consultant, Kaplan Consulting Group out of Northampton, Mass., and began the work of updating the Hazard Mitigation Plan just before the beginning of 2023. And so, from January 2023 through about April, I worked alongside other department heads and town staff with our consultant to look at the 2017 plan, begin identifying the existing condition of certain mitigation actions defined in that plan, and also going through the, designing and developing a community engagement process alongside a Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee, which you created around the same time. So, going back to spring 2023 and through the end of that summer, we worked with the community, similar to other plans we have brought forth to identify, A, what are some key priorities in terms of hazard mitigation, and I should go back and state that the purpose of the Hazard Mitigation Plan is specifically to identify and define natural hazards that are likely to impact our community, and to develop a plan to mitigate the potential impacts of those hazards. As you might expect, climate change and impacts from climate change-related impacts plays a large role in the plan. We completed the draft sometime at the end of summer 2023, I'm trying to think about timelines, yeah, summer 2023, spent a pretty significant period of time editing the initial draft, and finally submitted to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Emergency Management Department, the draft that you have before you for consistency with state plans and state requirements for hazard mitigation plans, which was accepted by the state in April of this year. We still need to submit this plan to FEMA for federal acceptance and recognition as a bona fide hazard mitigation plan, subject to all the benefits that come along with it. And notably, that's funding. If we don't have a hazard mitigation plan, there are a variety of grant programs that we do not have access to, similar to a housing production plan, or similar to an open space and rec plan, there's just large pots of money we can't access without it. And so, in many respects, the actions, the mitigation actions contained in the plan are specific projects that have been identified that, if implemented, should mitigate our risks to future natural hazards. And so, that is, I suppose, it for my presentation. If there are any questions by the board, I'd be more than happy to answer them, but to submit this document to the federal government for their review, I require the select board, adopt it, and sign the resolution that's been prepared as a draft in your packet.
Okay, questions?
I got a quick one. So, Evan, if we were to experience like a hurricane, tornado type of, type of experience, I'm assuming this is what they would fall back on, is how we're going to deal with it?
So, I mean, when it comes to actual emergency declaration, and you have a disaster, certainly there are funding, there's funding available for you to access in the event of needing to clean up something significant like a hurricane, or a tornado, or whatever it might be. The items contained in this particular plan are for improving low-lying roads, for example, for making the floodplain more resilient, so that we can obtain funding and implement those changes with the funding we now have access to. So, in the event of one of those natural disasters like a hurricane, folks in and around, not just people, but also property, is substantially protected from the maximum potential detriment. Of course, there are still going to be impacts from natural hazards. The purpose of the plan is to identify those projects that would reduce those impacts.
And there's funding available for those projects?
Exactly, yes, there are.
If we approve this?
Say that again, Carol?
If we approve this?
Yes, if the federal government, if FEMA specifically accepts this plan, we've now gone through the full process, and you have accepted a bona fide hazard mitigation plan, which opens up funding opportunities for the town.
David?
I'm wondering, has this been, because I remember we brought it before the select board, once before, with incorporating edits and things, has it been revisited by those collective bodies that we, I think we had a joint meeting around it, or I know I think
This is the first time this board has seen the Hazard Mitigation Plan in public session.
I thought Ashley spoke to it with
You may be thinking of the Harbor Management Plan?
Maybe that's it.
It's another HMP, so not to be confused with the other HMP.
It's another book.
It's another book.
So, this is, this is your first view of the plan. I had submitted to the select board prior to my last presentation, and obviously that was a long meeting, and we didn't get to it until then, but it has been publicly available for some time, it had gone through a public review period and comment period, those comments were incorporated with the committee. And I should also mention that, you know, in the development of the plan itself, there was obviously stakeholder engagement, identification, participation, notably with Nelson Andrews. Nelson was a huge asset to the development of this particular plan, and a copy has been provided to him as well.
Significant changes?
No, no major changes.
No major changes.
In fact, I can't think of, there was major edits that went into the document prior to its submission to the Commonwealth, and these were, you know, when you work with a consultant for the type of grant program we work through here, where we didn't get to choose our consultant, it was kind of provided to us, they don't get much of the nuance and context of where they are working, so there was a lot of narrative massaging that had to happen, but there was no major data updates, or no substantial revisions of included mitigation actions.
Yeah, I don't see any negative here. Do you see any negatives, a shot false?
Of all the things I've worked on in the past, in six years as an employee of the town, this is a relatively non-controversial item. I'd say the actions in it are consistent with much of our long-term planning work, and our ability to implement those actions would be significantly crippled by not having access to the funding that this plan would provide.
Michaela?
Thank you for this. Clearly, climate change is one of the most pressing issues confronting us. I have a small question, I went through the plan, I went through the comments, I don't have anything specific. When it's submitted to FEMA, which if we approve it tonight, that would be the next step?
It would.
What's the process, then? How long a process is that? Is simply submitting it sufficient, or do we need to get approval from FEMA? And again, how long?
I do not know how long the review process takes, Michaela, I would have to ask, perhaps the state office would be able to provide that answer to me, or at least our consultants would be happy to follow up with you in that regard. The state, or excuse me, the federal government, I do believe, needs to accept the document as consistent with their regulations to be active and valid. The state review process took about four months. I don't know if the federal government would mirror the state process, however.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Now, if we, if we motion this tonight, is it for full adoption, or is it just to move it forward to the next step for the feds to look at it, and then it would come back, and we'd have a second bite at the apple?
If you want to change this plan, I would suggest you change it before you submit it to the federal government.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, I haven't had a chance to go through the entire thing. You know, I had some family obligations and things over the weekend, so I, first time looking at, a little hesitant myself, that's just me, but I don't know how others feel.
I'm ready to vote yes on this one, I don't, he's put in the time and effort, and I respect him, and I know that what he does, his work is done properly.
I went through it too, and there wasn't any major concerns?
No, the plan is comprehensive and consistent with the state plan, and the state has approved it.
Exactly.
I don't have any questions about it.
So, I need a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion, so?
I suggest the motion would be to adopt the plan, and some language relative to the actual resolution, you need to adopt that resolution, and I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda before me.
I got that, so
A resolution to, okay, got it?
I have a motion to adopt and recommend the mitigation plan incentive resolution and adoption documentation.
Of the hazardous?
Of the hazard mitigation plan.
Second. Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Evan.
Thank you all very much, hope you have a great night.
Thank you, everybody, for the time.
Nice to see you again.
You as well, Tom.
See you.
If you're in tomorrow, I'll see you then. Thanks, everybody, have a great night.
Okay, public comment. Kathy? Thank you. Okay, public comment, Susan Dagel.
Good evening, and thank you all for having me speak tonight. I'm before you for now the 4th of July. And the 4th of July in a row that Mashpee Wakeby has been under a cyanobacteria advisory with the pond closed and a very toxic Dolica spermum bacteria that can kill dogs because there is no treatment. that can kill dogs because there is no treatment. So tonight, I'm here to tell you that our ponds are not okay. John's pond is in the same boat this week. In fact, I have a very dear friend of mine with her family on John's pond, and the video they sent me today of the water is terrifying. I see on your agenda every single, every time you have a meeting, water quality updates. Yet we just blow right by them. In fact, I can't recall when there was the last water quality update given. I'd have you go look. So a couple of other things that I need to point out to you is that in February, Mr. Ed Eichner came and gave you the state of the waters, although those were the salt waters, not the fresh waters. And I was here talking to you at that time, and I do believe, if you look at the video, he told you the management plan for the diagnostic study, which was completed data-wise last fall, would be in your hands in April. It's July, and you don't have it. He gratefully did come to our annual meeting of the Mashpee-Wakeby Pond Alliance a few weeks ago and gave us some updated information, but it's still not the completed management plan, and he could not give us a date for when that would be delivered to you. It was very clear that our ponds are in a horrible state. Mashpee and Wakeby are bad. Wakeby is worse. There's no oxygen on the bottom of either lake. So I ask you to consider posting on one of these water quality updates, not only Mashpee-Wakeby, but a pond discussion for all ponds in our town to come together to understand what's being done. Last year, you did send a nice letter to Sandwich talking about what we wanted to see for the Village Green 40B project. And it was a very nice letter, and it's great. I stand behind everything you wrote. However, the folks have now submitted a building permit. I will finish quickly. A building permit in which they have asked for a waiver for wastewater because they declare their parcel not part of the sole source aquifer. Just think about that for a minute. We live on an island. The Cape is an island. We are a sole source aquifer, but their little parcel is not part of it. And they are asking for a waiver for wastewater. They're currently considering a solution that will be tested at Mass TC, which sounds fabulous, but I've never heard of it. So I'd like to make sure that you're all paying attention, because this particular parcel is between Peter's Pond, Pimlico Pond, Snake Pond, and Mashpee-Wakeby.
Okay, Susan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith Harris?
Good evening.
Good evening.
And thank you for allowing me to speak. I just have a couple of things I'd like to mention to you. The first one, you just voted on the hazard mitigation plan, and I just need to remind you that there's no representative from wastewater on that committee, nor on the future plans. So, and I think that the wastewater superintendent came on just as the plan was being written. And so I think it was just an omission because the person wasn't in place. And the second thing I wanted to mention is that we need the select board's help, because the sewer commission has been down one, one member for months. And from going through the rules and regulations, the select board is supposed to be helping with the, you know, gaining people to come onto the board, and there may be another resignation. So the board would be down to five people. So we need your help in recruiting and getting new people for the sewer commission. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that, given the issues the town is facing, wastewater, housing, stormwater, I think that we need to have joint meetings periodically with all of the different commissions that are involved in managing the issues together. We cannot look at things as silos. We can't look at housing without wastewater. We can't look at wastewater without stormwater. We can't look at stormwater without looking at the larger plan. So I would request that you can figure out a way for us to have joint meetings of the major commissions that would come together to start to work at plans and solutions for our problems within the town. So thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Heney?
Thank you very much. My name is Matthew Heney. I'm the trustee of Gooseberry Island Trust. So I wanted to just give you guys a little background, because we have a draft article, number six there, about Gooseberry Island. I want to help you guys with your due diligence. You understand some stuff, you hear some stuff from the horse's mouth, I guess you could say. So just to give you guys a little background, the trust sued the town of Mashpee in federal court for regulatory taking. The, and I have the decisions here, I'm going to leave them here too, so you guys can read it. The federal district court dismissed the lawsuit because they said, "We never presented the zoning board with the steel bridge proposal." But if you recall, we went to the zoning board, we said, first went to the zoning board, we said, "We're not going to build a bridge." They said, "No." We went to the zoning board, we said, "We're going to build a wood or steel bridge." They said, "No." They denied it. So we look at that, that ripened the regulatory taking claim. We filed the lawsuit in federal court. So the district court said, "We never presented the steel bridge to the zoning board," so the claim wasn't ripe yet. But also in the decision, the district court said, "If you regulate a property, make it unbuildable. It's a regulatory taking. You have to compensate the property owner." But they dismissed the case without prejudice, sent us back to the town, but we didn't want to go back to the town because we knew we already got the denial for the steel bridge. So we appealed that case to the First Circuit. So the First Circuit looked at the decision from the zoning board and said, and I have the oral arguments with town council. Town council took the position that the denial of the zoning board wasn't a denial, it was a maybe. And so they said, "We didn't deny the project. We didn't make the decision yet." So we disagree with that. We had, denial's a denial. I mean, I don't think you could argue that. But so the First Circuit said, "It's not a conclusive decision. We didn't fit, we, we had obtained a government's conclusive and definitive position on the application of the town zoning bylaws to Gooseberry Island." So it got kicked back to the town, because they said, "The regulatory taking claim is not ripe because you never got the denials from the zoning board." So what do we do? We lifted the stay in the zoning appeal case from Superior Court. So in this zoning appeal case in Superior Court, the town took the position that they're not giving us the permits. They're denying us. They put in their proposed statement of facts, and then the judge adopted it because nobody's entitled to variance. So they had the mermilium and decision, finding a fact ruling of law and order of judgment. So we got this decision, which we feel ripens the regulatory taking claim. We're getting ready to file the new regulatory taking claim. I got a big law firm that's going to do it on a contingency basis. I guess they want their, you know, third of the money. So I said to myself, "Wait a minute. The town doesn't want this property developed," obviously, for whatever reason. So we said, "You know what? Maybe we should let the town buy the property." So we proposed to the CPC, use CPC funds to buy the property. It has to be under mutually agreeable terms. So that's why we have the article on the draft, Warren article. You know, we're interested in selling the property to the town under mutually agreeable terms. You can use CPC funds. I know the CPC chair is looking for some direction from Mr. Collins. I don't know if he met with the chair yet or not. She wanted a little direction there. So-
Need you to wrap it up.
Yep, I got you. So that's, that's pretty much it. So anyways, we're sort of in a holding pattern here. You know, we'll work with the town, but you know, if the town doesn't make any progress, you know, we have no choice but to refile the regulatory taking case. So hopefully, you know, everything works out for the town there, and it won't affect the tax base whatsoever. If you use the CPC funds and other grant funding too. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Okay, that is it for public comment. Communication and correspondence, we don't have any. Old business, new business. Discussion and approval of the following. One-day license, knockabout beer. Knockabout Gardens at the Commons, I should say. Hi Peter, hi Margaret.
Hello, this is my wife, Margaret Merner, Peter Merner with Knockabout. So we saw you guys about eight, six or eight weeks ago requesting some single-day permits to get the summer going. Give you guys an update. We're back to request twenty or thirty-nine more to get us till, hopefully, the ABCC approves our 21(c) catering license that we've applied for, which is going to replace the single-day licenses. Since we met last, the application has been passed along to the ABC's board for approval, for their review and approval. So Nicole, our ABC investigator, had visited with us, took a look at the property, took a look at our plan, and approved everything. So we're the first brewery to ever apply for this. This has been something that restaurants typically apply for. So there's more due diligence been put on us to make sure that it's been done appropriately. So right now, we're just waiting for the date with the ABCC to approve it. So we're here to make sure we can continue operating down at the Beer Gardens. And so my wife, Meg here is, or Margaret, is putting these permits under her name for Knockabout since I've met my annual allotment.
Okay. Any questions? No? Need a motion and?
Motion to approve one-day liquor license application for Knockabout Beer Company, LLC. Knockabout Gardens at the Commons for seven seventeen, seven eighteen, seven nineteen, seven twenty, seven twenty-one, seven twenty-four, seven twenty-five, seven twenty-six, seven twenty-seven, seven twenty-eight, seven thirty-one, eight one, eight two, eight three, eight four, eight seven, eight eight, eight nine, eight ten, eight eleven, eight fourteen, eight fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Have a second.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, special event, the Veterans Banner dedication, which will be held at the Community Park gazebo, August 3, 2024, from 9:00 to 12:00. Richard's not here to promote. But could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Temporary sign permit for Seaside Le Mans.
Motion to approve temporary sign permit for Seaside Le Mans.
For August 31st.
Second.
Through September 7th.
Second.
Okay. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom? And I'm a yes. Road race application, annual mace race family fun, Saturday, August 17, 2024, 3:00 to 4:00 PM. This is something that's done every year or so.
Motion to approve annual mace race family fun run, Saturday, 8:17, 3:00 to 4:00 PM.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom? And I'm a yes. Temporary sign and one-day license for La Tavola, Friday, August 2, 2024, from 5:00 to 9:00. Mashpee-Chamber.
Motion to approve temporary sign permit, one-day license, La Tavola, Friday, 8:02, 2024, from 5:00 to 9:00.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Yes. Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion and approval, accepting the following resignation, Economic Development Industrial Corporation, EDIC. Commercial representative was Rick Care. Term expired, June 30, 2025. Unfortunately, he's moving out of state, and we really hate to lose him. He was a, so it's with regret, and I'd like to have a letter sent if I could. So I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Yes.
And I'm a yes. Town manager, discussion approval of the town's manager, goals. Sure everybody had a chance to read them?
Motion to approve town manager goals for 2024 through 2025.
Second.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 Tom? And I'm also a yes. And thank you, Rodney, for that.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible action on articles for the town meeting warrant, draft one. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at some of them, but I think a lot of them need to, they're kind of rough. So I'd like to wait and go through them at our next meeting, if we could. Is everybody okay with that?
I would support that.
Okay.
One thing I did notice, just, just as far as a comment, I did see, I don't know if you noticed, the numbers, the pages are numbered?
Numbered, yes.
That's something, I know, only because we look at these, we, meeting after meeting, and it's like we can jump to those certain pages now.
Yes.
Because otherwise, it was, it gets a little confusing sometimes.
It does.
So thank you for that.
So I need a motion and a second.
Motion to table?
To table.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes. John? Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Well, I was just going to comment about one of the articles, but I'll save it.
We can wait. Layzone reports. Water quality updates.
With regard to water quality, I, I too remember that Ed Eichner was to come and give us his, his management plan. And it's, it's well overdue. So I'm wondering how we reach out to him. Could we, could we support the town manager and reaching out, could we support the town manager and reaching out to him to ensure that we get that report as soon as possible? But certainly, I would think if it were due in April, within 30 days, if possible?
Yeah.
I agree. Just added to that, I just, you know, we, we always say Mashpee-Wakeby, and we, because it's repetitive, unfortunately, it's, it's such a repeat situation that, but I just returned from vacation and now we're here at John's Pond, which John's Pond always seemed to be, I don't want to say indestructible, but it was always the pond that didn't have those issues.
Right. Now they are.
So that's, I'm not to say that Mashpee-Wakeby, it's just, we always hear that they always have these concerns. It's, it's a universal, it's a big problem. So I-
Yes.
You were heard, you know, speaking tonight.
Other towns are having the same.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I don't know what the exact answer is, but it has to be addressed.
And having-
The urgency of that report is-
Having the written report based on data collected and analyzed will enable us to know how to move forward.
Exactly.
To that, to that point, at our last environmental oversight committee meeting, one of the, during the water quality discussion, it was proposed by members of the committee to transition the Mashpee-Wakeby committee to a freshwater committee, so that it's all-encompassing of all the, all the freshwater bodies. And we're not recreating a separate committee for each water body. I'd be in favor of that. I think, I want to say it was a unanimous decision of the committee to, I'd have to look back, don't hold me to that, at our minutes, but I believe it was unanimous that they, that the committee recommended such a undertaking. And I'd ask for the select board to consider that on our next agenda.
Could we, would the board consider a motion to add that specific to the agenda tonight?
I-
Would that be?
I wouldn't do it tonight.
I'd do it at our next meeting.
But we'll get it on the agenda for your next meeting, and you can vote on it.
Sure. That's fine.
That's just my recommendation.
Yes. No, I, I think we should wait till our next meeting.
It's kind of difficult to-
We don't need to.
-articulate that. It's unanticipated.
Yeah, we should have something in front of us.
In front of us. Agreed.
That's just my recommendation.
Yeah. Any other?
Strictly for informational purposes, I attended the ZBA meeting in Sandwich, and again, for informational purposes, to hear what was going on with the 40B. And it was, it was really, they decided in the very beginning, no decisions were going to be made right away, because there were so many issues that hadn't been addressed. But one of the primary concerns that a lot of residents spoke to and members of the ZBA, just to, as I said, just for informational purposes, was the concern about a waiver for wastewater. And the reason I am following this is because it impacts Mashpee-Wakeby. It also impacts our work with the IMA. Mention was made at that meeting about the letter we sent as a select board. I don't know if there's any interest or how it would be done in reaching out to Sandwich to find out if the town of Sandwich broadly would want our support again.
Is this a board of-
I don't know if there's any interest or how it would be done in reaching out to Sandwich to find out if the town of Sandwich broadly would want our support again.
Is this a border health issue at this point?
No. No, it's, it's at ZBA right now, I think it, then it goes back, if I understand the process, Tom, it goes back to planning. One of the things, and I don't want to speak out of turn, because I don't have my notes, but one of the things that came up was the plan has changed dramatically, and the ZBA was trying to tease out what the, what the issues were. Comment was made about the letter of, of support that came from Mashpee, and again, it impacts Mashpee-Wakeby, so that we would have interest makes sense. I'm not clear if Sandwich would welcome support in that regard or, or not. That's something we can discuss at an upcoming IMA meeting, perhaps, or maybe we, the town manager could reach out to get a sense of what's happening in Sandwich. I think if we could support what's happening with, we could support Sandwich and what is the town manager and the select board is trying to move forward in Sandwich with regard to making sure that the water's protected. I would encourage us to do that.
I'll also reach out to Bud at, at Sandwich tomorrow and try to get some info.
Info on that, thank you. Okay, town manager updates. Thank you, Michaela.
I don't have anything other than, thank you for approving the goals.
Okay. I need a motion to adjourn?